So we will call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order at 10:01. All those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, check to see if there's any public here for comment for items not appearing on today's agenda. Seeing none, I don't believe we have any formal additions to the agenda, do we? No, I did want to read a warning about continuing scams involving sheriff's offices. It's come to our attention that there's a new round of scams going on referencing sheriff's departments. Sometimes it's the Center County Sheriff, sometimes it's sheriffs from other Pennsylvania counties, and sometimes it's sheriffs from other states. Please don't send them gift cards, wire them money, give them your credit card info without checking very, very carefully. Do not call the phone number the scammer gives you or use the email they provide. Some scammers are now very sophisticated and they will answer your call or email in a very convincing fashion. Some of the people taken in by these scams to the tunes of hundreds or even thousands of dollars. And these people are very knowledgeable and experienced. Just because the caller says they're from law enforcement and perhaps even the caller ID looks official, it doesn't mean they're legitimate. If the Center County Sheriff's Office is referenced, please call 814-355-6803 during business hours before you do anything. If they're referencing the sheriff's office in another county, please carefully look up the phone number for that sheriff's office and call them before you do anything. Thank you. We wanted to bring this to the attention of the public before more people are harmed. Thank you. All right, moving back to the official agenda, we've got meeting minutes for August 5th. If they're okay, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meeting held August 5th.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the meeting held on August 5th. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Moving on to proclamations, we've got a big one today. Proclamation 38 proclaiming August 15th through the 23rd as Grange Fair days in Center County. And we have Barry and Ben both here. Why don't you come to the side table so that our news reporters can get a better angle on you. But I believe you're actual, both presidents and former presidents of the fair.
Yep.
So thank you so much for coming, and I believe it's the 151st year, which is still a good number. I'll turn it over to the two of you.
We're just thankful for Amber and Mark and Steve to have us here today, and we're looking forward to the 151st Center County Grange Fair. We do have information, when we went to the state conference in January, we were told that we are the third largest attendance fair in the state and that we actually generate the most economic impact in the state. So we're number one for economic impact, probably close to $20 million that is generated through the Center County Grange Fair and the associated things that we do there. So we're very excited about that. That's a real plus for the county as well. But 264 acres over there, it's the largest geographic fair in the state, and we've got lots of entertainment coming up this week. We have Daryl Worley, we got to see him at the 2024 convention. He does a fabulous act. He does a lot of public service things too with US, you know, with the military. So does Neil McCoy as well. In fact, he's done 17 tours with USO. And so we're very happy to have those two guys there, big name entertainment. We have some Christian entertainment. There's a Caleb and John, they're a young duo. The one has a pastor's son, but they do contemporary Christian music. They are up for a Caleb Award right now, so we're very happy to have them. We also have another Christian group, Consumed by Fire, it's three brothers. And I understand that they've had two in the top 10 here just recently, and they're also up for awards. And we've got lots of other entertainment on the South Side stage and Jubilee Grove. And there's another big one at the stage, it's Terely Goffey, he's a Johnny Cash impersonator. He's actually been endorsed by the Cash family. He's appeared in movie clips and things. So the family has actually endorsed him. So we're getting a lot of hits on our entertainment. But our opening ceremony is Thursday night.
6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM. We also have our Queen coronation on Wednesday at 6:00 PM. So the 13th is the Queen coronation, the 14th would be our opening ceremonies, and then we kick off the 15th. We always appreciate the county commissioners coming. They usually come to our opening ceremonies. Hopefully you're coming this year.
Okay. It's on the calendar. I'm leaving a conference early to make it.
And that will be located at the same location, the South Side stage is where we have both ceremonies, Wednesday and Thursday evening. Yes, I would also like to thank the three of you, I'd like to thank all the entities, from county and state that help support our fair. We couldn't do this without your help. I have to say thank you to the Department of Corrections, the State of Pennsylvania. They came and put up our tents this year. We have 1,001 tents. And they also help us take them down and get things stored after the fair is over. Hopefully the weather is good for our fair. We're looking forward to seeing each and every one of you. That's our yearly, that's our yearly event where we get to see people. Sometimes I see them at Grange Fair and Grange Fair only. So it started out as reunions for families, and there's still family reunions that are conducted there. So we're looking forward and hoping for good weather.
Yes.
One thing I wanted to say, the county, this Center County Commissioners is the only sort of commissioners that can actually say that they possess a tent at the Grange Fair. And we welcome you and we're glad to hear that you're coming. This year, in conjunction with the Department of Transportation, they are going to have a job seminar, have some of their equipment on display. We're looking forward to working with them. They will probably be delivering their display today. So we'll be, hopefully they can get some people hired and are happy with what we're providing for them. So again, thank you, all of you.
Barry said we always pray for fair weather. I think we mean good weather. But fair weather is sometimes a rainy evening or so, and we understand that as well. But we do appreciate your support year after year, and we're so thankful that you're behind us at Center County Grange Fair and hopefully continue to be so in the future. But we thank you for the proclamation. We're excited about it each year.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, we all love the fair. Before I hand it over to Amber, are you going to make the announcement about the election?
I was thinking about it.
Very good. You do that, then. Okay. And I will mention that the America 250 organization will have a van at the fair. I believe in an area you call the Triangle, it's over toward the animal barns. And I think they're going to be there roughly from noon to 5:00. And I think they even have some poor intern who dresses up as a character.
Yep, he's supposed to be there for the parade. Yep.
Yes, yes. And of course, I'm quite sure all three commissioners will be at the parade, and we're looking forward to that too. So lots going on at the fair every single day, great music. Kind of surprised to hear that we're number one for economic impact in the state because my population, we're only the 21st, 22nd biggest county. So that's wonderful. I'll hand it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, thanks for coming and giving us a little highlight of some of the entertainment to come. That's really exciting. I know it takes a lot of planning to be able to bring in these like world-class acts, you know, year after year. The Grange Fair is often a place where we see up-and-coming artists, and that's a great opportunity. And thanks for, you know, just tremendous amount of planning, I know, goes into the organization of a fair that lasts, you know, a week and a half and, you know, bringing people from all over the country to come back for what is often a family reunion. Really exciting. One of the things I did want to mention is Center County Elections is going to have our mobile election van, which is a new service through our Elections Department. That will be parked on, I believe, on Thursday near the Emporium at the Grange Fair. So if anyone is in need of any voter services in terms of registration forms or a chance to ask questions about what's going to be on the ballot in November, that's a great opportunity to stop by and for anyone who's interested just to see the van. And it'll be coming this fall to a neighborhood near you, somewhere in Center County. So that's kind of an exciting new thing we're doing this year. And yes, we do have our county tent is near, it's like just a few tents down from the, sideways from the Emporium. So and we'll be, you know, really trying to highlight some of the opportunities for employment with Center County government as well.
Great, thanks Amber. Commissioner Dershowitz.
I just, first of all, thank you for all you do. I know this is a labor of love for both of you and all your, everybody in the Grange Fair organization and the Grange in general. But I would also want to thank you for recognizing some of the folks in the county, you know, Sheriff Sampson and his staff and deputies have been very helpful to you. And also our EMA staff and communication staff, Dohmer and his crew. I mean, this isn't something you plan just a week out and expect it to all work. This is something that starts just about the day that you close up one year, you're already planning for the next. And knowing all the things that go on out there through the, you know, the horse arena and all the other events out there, you utilize those 260-some acres pretty effectively. And we thank you for that. And just want to say that we'll be out there and support you again. And just, it wouldn't be Center County, it wouldn't be the summer if there weren't the Grange Fair. And unfortunately, it marks the end of summer, so that's kind of, but ultimately, usually, you know, kids are going back to school and after that. And it is a marker in time, and it has been for 151 years, so keep up the good work.
Speaking of, you talked about the horse area, I mean, we do have the largest equine center on the east coast. And that's booked from March right on through till the end of October, every weekend. And it's a big draw. And we do have that rodeo coming in the second Tuesday of the, that Tuesday of the fair. And I know my wife and I tried to get out to it last year, and we were standing like six or seven deep and couldn't see anymore, so. But it is packed out there. Those events do bring people in. That truck and tractor pull area is heavily utilized as well.
Not to mention.
The Six Horse Hitch will also be there out at the equine area, the one that, the circuit that runs the farm show arena. They'll be there the last weekend of the fair.
Oh, nice.
So I think they kick off at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock out there with their shows. So yeah, there's something for everybody.
Oh, definitely. And so county will have numerous tables, as Steve was mentioning, in the Emporium, the sheriffs, the veterans department, conservation, I believe, and I think one or two other departments at least have posters up on tables. And of course, the county will have our tent, as Amber mentioned, just a couple tents down from the Emporium. Apply for a job, ask about services, receive brochures and booklets about all the different things the county does with 52 different departments. We're touching your life every day, you just don't know it.
And support the vendors, those food vendors and things over there. There's no calories at the fair, so. You don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, thanks for that.
I think we do have over 300 different concessionaires there and over 7,000 items on exhibits, so there's a lot to see and a lot to do. And we do make upgrades this year to the goat barn. If you go through the goat barn this year, you'll see some upgrades and new rabbit pens in our rabbit barns, so we're excited about that. In fact, I know Mark, I hit Mark up for form those rabbit pens.
It's for a good cause.
Rodeo night, there's a whole new set of bleachers that was placed out at the competition track. So they're actually a larger set, they're higher up. So we offered a lot more seating than what we had out there, so that's something you can check out too.
I believe a couple of vendors moved around, so make sure you download your Grange Fair app so that you can find them when they move. Great. Any questions from the press on this? Anything else we need to cover?
Nope.
All right, we'll stay there. We'll adopt the proclamation and then JJ will take some pictures.
So I will move to adopt proclamation 38 of 2025 proclaiming August 15th through the 23rd, 2025, as Grange Fair days in Center County.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation number 38 proclaiming August 15th through the 23rd as Grange Fair days in Center County. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Come on up. Thanks, guys. Get your two in the center there, pretty close to Center Hall. How are we looking, JJ?
Just a little bit that way.
A bit further toward middle.
Yeah, I think Steve was good.
Okay.
Don't we say Grange Fair? What's the three?
Grange Fair!
One more time. That was not a good process.
Jesus better?
Yeah. Thank y'all.
All right. You got it. No, 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 no. Not going to TikTok with me on the daddy. Thanks. Yes, yes. Should mention on Children's Day, the commissioners will still have the 1,000 individual serving cups of creamery ice cream for children of all ages, including adults, at the grandstand starting about 11:00 o'clock until they're gone. And I think last year we ran out somewhere around 11:45-ish.
And that's Penn State creamery ice cream. That's part of our in-kind agreement with Penn State, so.
Yep.
Got to put a plug in for that.
Exactly. Very good. Okay, well, that was fun. Moving on, Jonathan has, let's see, how many, three capital projects for us.
Yes, good morning commissioners. This morning I am asking for your consideration and approval of change orders with Ainsworth Incorporated for the Community Services Building for the installation of a mini-split HVAC unit in the penthouse elevator machine room, additional exhaust fan in the basement restroom, and unit heater corrections per code requirements in the amount of $27,962.05. Also, change orders with GM McCrosen for masonry patching in the boiler room per code requirements, the installation of a trench drain at the entrance of the atrium in the amount of $5,871.61, and a credit for changes in the window glazing of the conference rooms for a total change event of $3,979.76. And the last item is a contract with Landscape 2 for the preparation and installation of four landscape beds that include the soil and compost mix, weed matting, and riverstone plantings of 268. plants at the Community Services Building for $22,820.
Well, thank you, Jonathan. I believe almost all those plants are perennials, so they'll just keep coming up.
That's correct. Over three-quarters of them are perennials.
And we do appreciate GM McCrossan giving us that little credit there.
Yes.
Other questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz. All right.
I'll move to approve capital items one through three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the three items for capital. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
And now Jason, well, actually not just from the controller's office, the controller is here for an agreement for the retirement board.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. And I am here based for a recommendation from the retirement board, of which I am a member, along with the three of you and Treasurer Kennedy. And that is to approve the agreement with Gabriel Raider and Smith Company to take over our actuarial services that were assigned from Corn Ferry to this company. Corn Ferry, who's been a long-term actuary for the county, starting as the hay group, is getting out of the actuarial business. And per that contract that we have with Corn Ferry, they're, since they're getting out of the business, they're allowed to assign that to another actuary. GRS is the one that they've assigned it to. And there are no changes for 2025 to our existing contract with Corn Ferry. So the monthly fees and services provided will remain the same with GRS for the remainder of this year.
Great. Thanks for covering that, Jason. It was kind of strange they got out of the business because I think they did the majority of the counties in the Commonwealth.
Yeah, of the 37 counties, I think they had 31. So might be maybe in the upper 20s, but I think it was 31. So it was odd. They just had declining staff over years and decided that they weren't going to fill it. So that's where we ended up.
Yeah, no questions. It seems like, you know, from the discussion in the retirement board with GRS, it seems like they'll be able to, you know, fulfill the same services and should be fairly seamless.
Yeah. And a lot of their team came from Corn Ferry, too, in the Pennsylvania-specific market, so.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
It's all good.
All right.
I'll move to approve the agreement with Gabriel Raider, Smith, and Company.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Gabriel Raider, Smith, and Company. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
And then we have Dave from Transportation with a report submitted.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners. I'm here to ask you to consider the approval of the submission of the fourth quarter report for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program, better known as MATP, this is for the services provided to those individuals that qualified under the guidelines that they set forth. And the fourth quarter total is $263,395. And that, with all the other three-quarters, that puts us at $990,176 for the fiscal year for MATP, for those services.
Great. Well, thanks for the additional information, Dave. And we do appreciate the funding that helps cover the costs of your department.
I do know that our initial allocation is a little bit less than what the total is, so they always backfill us that money. I don't have the exact amount. I apologize. My girl that I would get that from is out sick today. So I didn't want to bother her while she's sick. But I know it's probably, I'm going to say at least $25,000 that they owe us yet. So we have more money coming, but it's always nice to be able to do those services and meet the needs of the people, for sure. So, yeah.
All right. And hopefully, your fiscal clerk will bounce back in time for her to go to the fair.
Oh, yeah. She'll be fine. I'm hopeful, yeah.
So this program is essentially self-sustaining?
Yes, it is, Commissioner. And of course, with some of the things that they've changed, it required us more duties for that service. So they are fully funding a position in our office now for, primarily, her main duties are all related to the medical assistance program. And she does help with other duties as needed. But we keep her pretty busy just dealing, verifying locations that they accept it, verifying that people actually have appointments. And they're taking a whole different approach on that, which is fine. I think it's a good thing to make sure people aren't defrauding the system. So, you know, if I call and ask if Mr. Dershowitz has an appointment and they say no, well, then we call Mr. Dershowitz back and say, "We can't take you because you don't have an appointment." And we run into that. So what we're doing is a good thing. It just creates a little more work on our part, but they did fund that position for us, which is very nice. So, yeah.
Good. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
Yeah, just, you know, just to note, this is really important for the individuals who access this service. So thank you to your department for, you know, serving those needs.
I would echo that.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll take a motion then.
I'll move to approve the fourth quarter report for fiscal year 2425 for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program for next week's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the fourth quarter report for fiscal year 2425 for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. I'm moving it to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you all very much.
And we'll see you at the fair, I'm sure.
You betcha. I'm headed over there to set up our county tent here in a few hours. So get the preliminary stuff done and then we'll move in Thursday with the staff. So, yep, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Wonderful. And I see Kathy's ready and waiting with some settlement documents for another round of opioid settlement funding.
Yes, sir. I'm here today to ask that the board consider approving the settlement documents to allow Center County to participate in the next round of opiate settlement funding, along with other counties and subdivisions in the state of Pennsylvania. This is connected directly to the Purdue and Sackler settlements, the Purdue bankruptcy and the Sackler settlements. This would include Center County in the most recent national prescription opiate litigation and receive funding for approved activities to benefit individuals that have been affected by the opiate crisis. They're still finalizing the details on this settlement. But the first step is for those counties and subdivisions that are eligible to participate to sign documents that indicate that they agree to participate in the process. The next step then, after those parties agree to participate, is that those that are eligible will then vote to approve the bankruptcy plan. I don't believe that we are eligible as voting members, but those that are have to then vote on the bankruptcy plan. What is currently proposed is $6.5 billion to be made in 16 payments over 15 years. This is, this particular settlement is not being done through the Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office, but through the National Administrator. So it's just a little bit different. However, they all use Exhibit E, which is the same set of activities, the same approved process that we've used for all of the litigations. So we all know what activities we can do, what activities we can't do. And so that helps us in terms of planning and the process that we use to identify activities for which we use the money. So once this all, this whole process completes, the funding would be made available to us and would start around January 1st of 2026 and would likely run through December 31st of 2041.
Great. Thanks for covering that, Kathy, and some additional assistance for people in Center County who have become addicted primarily to opiates. And John and I will check our email inboxes very carefully for those documents that come in and they look like spam initially. But we dig through them, read them and go, "No, wait. This is a legal settlement or this is a grant."
Right, exactly.
Signed a different one this morning. Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
Yeah, thanks for staying on top of this and making sure that we're eligible for, you know, whatever funds do come through this process.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Nah, thank you, Kathy. I know you've been very diligent in making sure those dollars are spent wisely and we appreciate that.
Happy to do it.
I'll move then to approve the settlement documents for the opiate settlement funding.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the settlement documents for the opioid settlement funding. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Do you have any questions on this one?
Yeah, I guess just one to start with. What are some of the, I guess, activities or what do you want to call them that, like, previous funding was used for?
Well, why don't you pivot over to Kathy? Kathy's the expert.
Thank you. We've focused a lot of our work right now around prevention activities for young people. Evidence-based programs have regularly been approved by the opioid trusts. We've also looked at medication-assisted treatment for individuals who have identified an opiate use disorder as their diagnosis or have been identified through the course of treatment. That's where we focused a lot of our energies. We've looked at different recovery-focused activities, our Recovery Center in State College, the Recovery House, and have spent some funding there. That seems to be the primary focus of what we've looked at. We're looking ahead and identifying some needs at the correctional facility, specifically a medication-assisted treatment program there and other services that will be needed at the correctional facility as there are a number of folks who have been incarcerated who have that diagnosis and are in need of services there. So that's where a bulk of the funding will be spent currently and over the course of the next few years.
And then just to remind me, when was the last round of funding?
We've started receiving funding probably three to four years ago. And typically, we get a check every December. And so we have to report to the opioid trust twice a year, where we have spent the funding and where we plan to spend the funding over the next six to eight months. And so we are regularly reporting in on how the funding is being used and what our upcoming plans are. So we have to report in because every payment we receive, we have 18 months to spend that funding. However, I can assure the commissioners and the public that that funding goes very quickly because there is a significant need for the use of those dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Kathy. See, I have Tim here in Center County. Thank goodness. Thanks to the work of Kathy, her staff, a bunch of other people inside county government and several dozen human service agencies and a number of even groups in the faith-based community. The Hope Initiative that Commissioner Dershowitz serves on their board. Fortunately, Center County has not been impacted quite as badly as a lot of the other counties in Pennsylvania. But still, every death is tragic and every person who becomes addicted has to work very, very hard for recovery.
Very much so.
Yeah. Anything else, Tim? All right, great. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we have Leah with Three Contracts for Children, oh, there she is. Three Contracts for Children and Youth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this morning, I am here before you to request for your approval in consideration for three contract renewals, all for foster care residential services for our dependent and delinquent youth. And each of the contracts are for the period of July 1, 2025, to June 30 of 2026. The first contract is for, is with Adelphi Village. They provide several levels of foster care residential services. So that contract total is for $260,000, funded by the state at $208,000 and the county at $52,000. The second contract renewal is for Presley Ridge. They provide foster care services as well. That contract total is for $60,000 with the state share at $48,000 and the county share at $12,000. And then the final renewal is with Families United Network for their foster care services. That contract total is for $40,000 with the state share at $32,000 and the county share at $8,000.
Great. Well, thanks for covering those, Leah. And we appreciate those three different suppliers for all the work they do. Obviously, the first one is Adelphi Village is doing quite a bit to assist our foster children.
Absolutely.
Any comments or questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
No questions. Just noting that we're always looking for families that are willing to take in foster youth, particularly the school-aged kids who sometimes are harder to place.
Absolutely. And each of these providers are located outside of Center County. So the more we can bring children into Center County and keep them here, the better we are. Absolutely.
Yeah, great point. Commissioner Dershowitz?
Nah, it's all very, although it's standard, you know, you don't realize how much money is being spent to accommodate some of these services.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate you taking care of them because it's important stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have a very strong support network to help our foster families. We have experienced mentors who have fostered a number of children. And we have a couple of different local nonprofits that also assist with a broad variety of services. In addition to what Children and Youth does as well.
Yeah. But we can't do it all, so we're very fortunate to have so many providers that are willing to step in. And our foster parent mentors provide that extra peer mentorship to foster parents and help them see, get through the challenges of their first placements as well as remedification efforts and things along those lines. And then having, you know, partnerships with organizations like Keystone Family Alliance helps us to be able to support families in a different way and help them tap into some other community resources that maybe we don't necessarily access. Thank you.
Any questions, Tim?
I will move then to add the Children and Youth Services Items 1 through 3 to next week's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the three Children and Youth Items to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Leah.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks. I think we've got a medium-sized consent agenda, but it's just in the contracts.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And I believe we do have a check run.
We do have a check run. The check that I'd like to highlight today is for the Children and Youth Service Bureau, Center County Youth Service Bureau, rather. When Kathy spoke a few minutes ago regarding prevention services that are funded by opioid settlement dollars, the Youth Service Bureau is one of the organizations that does help provide evidence-based prevention education to youth in our community regarding dangers of opioids and other drugs. And with that, I would move that we approve the check run dated August 8.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the August 8th check run. All those in favor, do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And John, do you have an administrative report this morning?
Nothing to report at this time.
I think so. And Commissioner Concepcion, I don't see a...
So we don't have a voter registration report today because the Election Department is in the midst of moving officially into their offices over in the Community Services Building, but I expect I'll have one next week.
All right. Thankfully, knock on wood, so far the movers are ahead of schedule and everything seems to be going pretty smoothly, which is tremendous. All right. And under announcements, Monday, August 18th, 11:00 a.m. at the grandstand, the Ice Cream Social sponsored by the commissioners at Grange Fair, utilizing our Penn State in-kind dollars for the Penn State Creamery Ice Cream individual-serving cups, I believe, Natalie here, but it's either five or six flavors every year. And we kind of rotate them around and try to see what are the most popular.
I think Death by Chocolate is pretty popular.
I know there's maybe some strawberry in there, too. But yes, Death by Chocolate.
People usually take what they can get, though.
Well, toward the end, yes. Yeah, toward the end, there's only like two flavors left. Any executive sessions to report or hold, John?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
And the remainder of our public meeting schedule, on Thursday, the 14th, combined salary board and board of commissioners meeting at 10, retirement board meeting at 1. And then Tuesday, August 9th, 10 o'clock commissioner meeting. And then Thursday, August 21st, a combined salary board and board of commissioners meeting at 10. Tim, the floor is yours for questions from the press.
Yeah, so last week, we talked with Representative Benninghoff about Rockview. And he said that he had heard that inmates are being moved out of there. And so that, to him, kind of indicates that a decision is made and that they're already kind of basically preempting that. So I just wanted to see, like, have you heard of that at all?
We've actually heard a similar rumor. And again, we urge the Department of Corrections to keep the both facilities open. Obviously, if there's some sort of compromise and we keep at least one facility open or a part of a facility open, we're willing to take what we can get. But again, we do urge the Department of Corrections to not close either facility. I don't know if the other commissioners want to add anything?
I, I actually do. You know, we've, we've gone, we've been through this process now for months and months and months, and I think we deserve the transparency that matches the, the level of significance that this, that this represents. And for us to, I, I don't think we should be hearing this from the side. We should be, we should be told what the plan is and if indeed they are going to close it or they're not going to close it. I think we need to know that, and the families that are involved and the, and the businesses that are impacted need to, need to understand that. I find it sad, actually, if, if this is being done in a surreptitious way where, you know, inmates are being moved out in preparation for something. You know, let us know. Be honest and straightforward with the public so we understand specifically what's going on. I think we all would appreciate that.
So, great question. Tim, anything else? All right, great. Thanks for coming this morning.